Well, I have two hours. It's 3:03. Microphones on. Wow, those are powerful today. Turn your cell phones down. All right. Today is Thursday, November 16th, 2017. After 3:00. This is a work session for Public Works of the Marquette Township Board. And we have lots of stuff from Mr. Page. Roll call. I can do the roll call. Everybody's here.
Not everybody. The guy doing the roll call isn't here.
I know.
Absent is?
Yes. Absent is Clerk Critari. Public comment. No public.
There being none.
Public discussion then goes to Public Works. The last meeting, we had requested of Superintendent Page to give us a no rate increase budget and to use the repair and improvement account of $100,000 or $160,000 to
You didn't get this.
Pay for it.
Yeah.
He's given us two printouts.
No, I've had it forever.
Huh?
I've had it forever.
Oh, you got something new today, though.
Which do you want to start with? Water or wastewater?
I see that. This is wastewater.
One packet's water and the other is wastewater.
When were we on?
Well, we were talking about water, so let's stick with that. All right, so we've got a new budget. We've got water system improvements, printout, and capital fund expenditures for the last
If you're on water, I have a question.
Ready?
Crazy. Here we go.
Okay. What are you looking at?
Looking at, well, I'm looking at the first page for the account. There is 654.
Debt service?
Debt service fee. And on your original proposed budget, it was 39577. On your revised budget, it's 40620, or 406620. I was wondering what the difference was.
Mm-hmm.
Seems to have gone up $10,843.
Yeah, that's the result of, let's see. That's a 40 cent increase in debt service, then?
No.
Well, it'd be 50 cents overall.
Yes, we didn't say anything about that.
I'm just looking for the Did you say 654? The debt service expenditures. This is kind of weird sounding here. Is that like echoing or?
No, that's
So what do I do? Turn the volume down? Probably. Turn it off?
Oh, we can hear you okay. The same thing circled. I just can't remember either with it.
Okay, so if you go to the expenses, it's like 574 on, I don't have a page number. They'll list all the debt for next year in the far right-hand column.
Where are we at, Kurt?
On the expenses for debt service, 574. It'd be the last, well, it wouldn't be the last sheet, but my sheets are not numbered. So the question that you had was about the revenues?
Yep.
Which would be the charge. So what that number should be, it should approximately match the expenses, which is the actual debt service total for next year, which is $407,000.
Okay.
So that'd be the change.
Well, but that brings me back to a similar question, then. Go to account 474. And in your
Okay.
And in your original estimate, you had 407462.
Yeah, I lost you. Where are you?
Why don't we stop right here, number of pages? So if you want to just refer to a page.
Looking at his original budget?
Well, what I did was I was comparing the original budget that was submitted to resubmission. And I was trying to come up with why the, initially, I was trying to come up with the change from the original submission of 395777. That's on page 591-8, Pete.
591-8?
Yep.
Okay.
And then on the resubmission, that same account comes up with 406620.
Right.
And I understand what you're saying about going back and looking at the expenses under debt service where you've got a 407462 there. But I'm not sure where the difference is, why we have a difference there when you redid it. I guess is my question.
Yep.
I can understand that the two got to come close to each other, but I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why they changed.
When I put the original number in, the expense was the same as what we're talking about right now, $407,000. So I'm trying to match it up, but I wasn't looking at that. I was looking at the, you know, the estimated for this year, I think it was. A smaller number than it is, over 395 something like that. Which is another revenue number that's estimated from last year. The 407 is just from the actual, the actual bond schedule, which is listed in the other book.
So in the meantime, when you redid the budget, you put
Yeah, when you asked me to look at this other stuff, I'm looking at
Okay.
That's what, I just noticed that.
Personally, I didn't think anything else would change except
Well, I didn't either, but I mean
Those two numbers?
If there's a number that's wrong, then
Yeah.
I should go ahead and talk about it.
So why wouldn't you just put the 407 in there, then?
Well, because I, I arrive at that number, that's a, that's a monthly charge per equivalent line size, okay? And I, that number's already set in terms of equivalent lines, line sizes. I do that back in August for the, for bottom of the year, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not going to work out exactly. That's what I'm getting at. I mean, I could have gone, you know, you know, maybe a few cents more, but $15 was like You know, when we had the first discussion, I was suggesting raising it 10 cents.
Yes.
And somebody was suggesting, well, why would we raise it 10 cents, you know?
So which number is right, though? The 407 or 406?
The 407 is correct.
So that really should be in your revenue, then?
Well, no. The revenue is, just like a charge by the gallon. Okay, I got to come up with some number to, okay. Same thing here. It's, the debt is equivalent line size, okay? So I've got the equivalent line sizes, I've got the other, you know, the total debt service.
So the
So to make it come out exactly right, you know, it'd have to be, you know, pennies.
So the 406620 is strictly driven by the number of equivalent lines times the, the fee?
The
And the 407462 is strictly driven by the debt service payments?
Correct, yes.
Which don't, which don't match, but
I would have made them the same, too.
So, back to my original question. If, if we, the, I, the original budget on page 591-8, that number was 395777. And that was driven by a proposed rate increase. We kept the rates the same, and we come up with a higher number, 406620. So it's $10,000 more, leaving the rates the same than it was when the rates were going to raise.
No, I'm suggesting the debt service rate would actually be $15, not 1460.
40 cent change.
40 cent increase.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Right. So that goes back to my original question. If at 15 is 395777, then how come at 1475, it's 406620?
No, it's just the reverse. That's what I'm saying. I looked at the wrong number originally. So the 460 that I proposed was to equal the 395 or whatever it was.
Okay.
My first number.
You're saying, you're saying that $15 will bring in a projected 4066?
Well, it'll be closer to 407, which is the real number.
There's another one that was different, too.
Okay, so then on the, on the same page, I'm coming up with $82,000 less on total revenues.
82122 change.
Total revenues for everything?
Under the water, the total revenues for water.
Yeah, the sales changed again.
Yeah, the sales number changed because you wanted to
Okay.
Calculate at the current rate.
Nope, I missed that one. I'm good.
So that did change. But also in that same line item, 642, which is sales, includes the base charge, which also, that, that number didn't change, but what changed was the, the volume charge.
All right, I'm good.
So again, to make the comparison, you have to go back to the original proposal, which is not, which is, you know, on a different, different sheet. The 802, for example, is the estimated year end.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
All right. I just, I just didn't, there was an oversight on the sales. I didn't see that number. And I was trying to figure out how it got to be 82125, but I can, I see how it did that now.
Okay, so we still have 222. Is that not the account we took this money from? In repair and replacements, replacement and improvement?
Yeah, 89, yeah.
891, right?
Right. I got a differential of 165950 is the new.
That's what I got, too.
Well, what I did there is, you know, that, that number is composed of two different spreadsheets. One is their replacement schedule.
That's what I wondered.
And one is the improvement schedule. So as I mentioned in my email, I let the replacements, because that actually includes, you know, stuff that we do routinely, like every year.
Yeah, that's the 165.
So the improvement schedule is all the projects that everybody's been talking about. Future projects that are proposed. So there's, that, that comes up with the difference that you're talking about.
Is this workable, Kirk? I mean, you, you did what we asked.
Is it the right thing to do, is it? Well, well, it's workable. The only problem I've got with it is, is you know, I, because I started, you know, the first work session, and I think David agreed with me, you know, we've got a huge project out there that everyone's agreed is the number one priority. That isn't even on here. And we're probably going to have to borrow money for it. But, you know, to do any of these projects, you know, we're going to have to borrow money for more than we have been. You know, after the last project was killed, you know, we just backed away from that. So we've just been paying out of pocket, you know, so. So again, the only problem I've got with it is, well, getting back to my asset management, for example, okay? The results of the asset management is, okay, you've got to have a capital improvement program. And if, if we're showing nothing, then, okay. And we've been showing something for years, now suddenly, now that we're required to show something, we take it away, it's going to look a little odd. It's still doable. I mean, you know, I, if I understand what you're trying to do is to pay off the debt.
Go ahead, Dave.
I guess what my under thought was, and the whole reasoning we were headed in this direction, is because we moved South Vandenboom up and Ontario Street was not actually in the CIP plan.
Right.
We did both of those ahead of time, which drained our surplus capital improvement dollars that we would, and I don't think we're actually going backwards on this, we're just saying that we've spent all of our money for the next year or two on projects that we, that were not scheduled to be done. So we're just going to back off and, and push the capital improvement projects that were scheduled to be done, push them out a little bit further so that we can fit them into a better schedule. And as far as the Phase 2, if the board decides to do Phase 2, that's going to start with a, with a completion date, and then it's up to the manager and the superintendent to to come up with the steps that have to happen and when they have to happen. But you need to have that before you can start attaching dollar amounts to it. And I don't think anything going on this year is going to seriously impact those dollar amounts. I think what's going to help more than anything else is the fact that we have the, a chance to pay down some of that debt service we've got. And we can use debt service money, you may have to classify it as something else, but you can essentially use that money to build up a fund to attack the Phase 2 if we decide to go through with it without significantly changing the rates. And I agree that you're going to have to change the rates sooner or later if you decide to move ahead with Phase 2. But the fact is, how much do we have to change it to move ahead with that? And the impact on the residents is going to be less if we can get rid of some of the debt service that we've got. And I think what, what I'm looking at here, after going through all the numbers, is we can get rid of some six of debt service accounts over the year. Three of them are going to go away by themselves just because of, of the timing, but the other three, they're going to actually be paid off early. And that's got to make a significant impact on, on the, the debt service fees. And then if we elect to continue with the debt service fees at the same rate in 2019 and 2020, then we're just putting that much more money away and we can pay off that many more of those debt services that are out there. And if you decide not to do that, and you decide you want to, you want to hold that money for Phase 2, then at least you've got some startup funds to get going on that, or you've got some matching capital if perchance you come up with a grant. You're just in a lot better position financially, and you're not going to add $10 or $15 to the current debt service fee for the residents. And I think that's going to be the tipping point. If we decide we're going to go ahead with Phase 2, and then it's, oh, by the way, you're not going to get charged $10 a month, now you're going to get charged 25. I think the hall's going to fill up and, and everybody's going to have some questions to answer, and I can't blame them. I'll be sitting on the other side asking the same question.
Just a couple of quick things. Number one, Kirk's concern about, you know, the asset management and having a CIP is, is a valid concern, but we're not abandoning CIP. All that you're doing is you're making a financing decision. And it's a financing decision that follows, as Dave, as Trustee Wiegand was talking about, it was a, it's not much different than a homeowner all of a sudden deciding to replace your roof when the shingles are on sale. It's the same thing we did with South Vandenboom. The road was being replaced, so we accelerated a project that was a long-term project to current time. And that basically accurately, as Trustee Wiegand said, drained our financial resources. At the same time, the, the Road Commission decided that we were going to do Ontario, we took that opportunity again to save money to accelerate the Ontario project as well, the, the Public Works portion of it. So what you've done basically is you simply put the brakes on, on your capital improvement fund for one or two years to put the money back that was not planned to have been expended the way that it was. And in the meantime, you're looking at utilizing current resources to reduce the interest that's being paid out on other debt services, which is a long-term savings to the township. So there were a number of different scenarios that were going on at the same time. Now, what we've done since our last budget session, Lois and Kirk and I have been trying to put this into a format that gives the, the board the information that they need to go forward looking at these. And I know you've been asking for it for a long time, and I think we probably have it in a format now. As you look at a lot of the attachments, and we've been going back and forth here for a couple of weeks, I think we'll give you a better picture of where we are in our actual capital project in terms of planning and where we're really short. So going forward, you can look at that and determine where you want to allocate those funds, how you want to, how you want to address that. But I don't think we're violating any budget principle or any philosophy of the board. The projects that you identified as key projects are still there. What you're struggling with right now is the same thing a lot of governments are struggling with for a different reason, because they haven't funded some of their benefit plans. How are you going to allocate the money that you've got to accomplish the majority of the goals that you have and not cost the residents more money? You know, and that, you know, and that's where you're at. That's, that's what the, your concept of not raising the rates this year and not putting any money, not canceling capital improvements, but not putting any financing into it for this year to see where your budget looks like and what you, what that then gives you the ability to do. Based on those numbers, you've got roughly $86,000. That is free and clear if you want to go that way. It's not free and it's not real clear, but it's free and clear to be able to be used, you know? So that, I think that's where you're, where you're at. You had an experiment. You said, what happens if we don't raise the rates? And what happens if we don't finance this year, the money that should go into capital improvements? Not cancel the plan, but just not put the money in this year. How does that look? So I think you've got that. You've got that now?
That's why I think that we've reordered, if we have 10 capital improvement programs in Ontario Street and South Vandenboom, we're labeled nine and 10. We've just taken nine and 10 and moved them up to one and two and pushed everything else back. And that's, in effect, what I see us doing here. We're just, we're just changing the order and moving them back, so we're not going to start it quite so.
The other thing we don't have, though, that I was kind of hoping, we've asked before, and you were talking about the format, is a clear picture on what we do have set aside, if anything, for any of those expenditures.
Yeah, we put that together. It's not part of the budget, that would be a separate document, but we have put that together.
Actually, it's in there, and you pack it.
It's in this one?
Yeah.
Okay. It's called
I mean, I, you know, I guess I have some questions about that, but it seems to be more of a question that doesn't have to do with budget.
More of a planning question.
Right. It does, it has generated, over the years, lots of discussion, that particular question. And it is, it is, it's an accounting thing, actually, so
Yeah, it's the second
It talks me a little bit difficult to understand, so. This format is like the the clearest thing we could come up with. You know, it's amount of money spent each year for capital improvements and identifies what it is. And then it's got the budget number for the same year, you know, that, that we were actually putting into the fund, so.
Well, I guess, as long as we're talking about it, the problem I had with the information we got, where I think we're a little lacking, and what I was asking for initially was, if you've got 10 CIP accounts out there that we're pulling money out for annually, and we're putting a dollar in each one every year, and in year four, we see a project comes up that we want to put some money into, like South Vandenboom and Ontario Street, and we pull five or $6 out of that account that's got 20 in it, where did that money come from? There must be some account that is now have less money in it than it had in it before. I realize it's all in one account, but one of those accounts, accounts has got to take a hit for wherever that money came from. And it's got to either, to replenish that money, it's got to either extend that account for another four years or five years and put that money back in it, or we have to put more money in that account. And that's where I keep coming up with, with more questions than answers on where each one of those accounts lie. And I understand that, that the replacement and improvement account is one general account with a number of CIP accounts inside of it. There doesn't seem to be anything that we can look at for where the accounts that are inside of that improvement and replacement account to justify where those dollars are and how much is in each one of those accounts.
I'm thinking that's what this is.
No, that's
I don't really say that.
Lois, do you have that one that you and I talked about with the multiple columns that shows where we are on each, each of those capital projects? The Excel spreadsheet we were talking about?
Randy, that's not this one, is it?
No, that's not what I'm, what I'm talking about.
This one is new that you're looking at right now.
Well, it's, that's new, but that's not what I, that's not what we had talked about. What we talked about was, on your capital, on your, on your capital page, ATS generator would have a column that said, here's the initial cost, this is how much we're doing for a year, we have this much in this account, we're in year two, year three, whatever it is. That was the Excel spreadsheet that we talked about. And that I don't see. And if it's a zero, then you're at year one.
Then the, the extension of that that I would see is someplace along the line, we took some money out of those accounts to do South Vandenboom in Ontario.
That's, and that's what you have, that's what you have in this package, showing you what year money was expended on those funds. It's the second to the last page. What year money was expended on those projects, but what you don't have is the Excel spreadsheet that we talked about that shows what today's status of it is, that you could look at and say, all right, on the Brookton Road update, the very first one that's on the top of the page, in 2012, we spent 72439, this one we redid the road. 13, we did 18418, but in 14, we're in year three, we have zero now, we're starting over again, that's now year one. And that's, that's what I was looking for in an Excel spreadsheet with, with the items that are listed on the last page, the ATS generator. Cost is $100,000, it's going to be over five years. We have, we have, it's $10,000 or $20,000 a year, we've got $40,000 in there, we're in year two. That's the, that's the sheet that you asked for, that I asked for, and I don't see it yet.
Yep.
Basically, what you're saying, David, you've got all these columns, but how much would you need? How much are you going to put in there? So you see every year what you're
Yeah, how much has gone into each one of those CIP accounts every year?
So you know, and if you take it out, you take a minus and you take it off from there?
Right.
And if you're with the ATS generator, if you're in year five and you've got, or you're in year, year four, and you've got $80,000 in there, and a project comes up and you decide to defer it for a year, you take $20,000 out, it backs you up a year.
Right.
That's the working document that you need to have with regard to these projects.
It'd be easier, and I, and I realize it doesn't have a whole lot to do with budget right now, but that, it would just make it easier when you're talking about South Vandenboom, you want to move up ahead of schedule, is you could look at a one-sheet summary like that and see what it does to the rest of the CIP accounts and where it sets them.
I gotta take this thing off of here.
That's what I copied and gave you, Kirk, and had two extra columns on it. I don't know if that got lost or mislaid.
Well, we, it wasn't lost, it wasn't going to be a budget sheet, it was going to be an Excel spreadsheet. It was going to be, you know, something you could use in conjunction with the budget when you were making those decisions.
Yeah, because it falls more to the CIP side than the budget side.
That's all my questions on that.
What do you think, guys? Do you want to, I mean, we've got two scenarios. We've got the original budget based on a couple different increases. We have one now that shows we can take some money, put it on some debt, pay it down, not fund any capital improvements this year. And I said it specifically that way, because that's all we're doing. We're not eliminating them, we're putting them off. We're just not funding them this year at the expense of paying down debt. But But we've gained all that interest benefit too, that we won't have to, to put out and keep the rates the way they are. Now, how does that end up impacting the number that you used? And I guess that would be another spreadsheet. You'd have to figure out how much interest we'd save that can go toward the debt, that we can actually reduce the debt again or still.
I've actually got that figured out, Lynn.
Well, on this, in the water, there's only one D of R.
Depends on how much interest we save, you know, this, you can't really just...
See, they're all different. We've got...
I went through the, the...
The others are like...
Page five of the miscellaneous.
Yeah, okay.
I went through the, uh...
You can guess at the interest.
Well, you can, I mean, the interest is there, right? I mean, it's going to change a few dollars one way or the other, but if we paid off three additional accounts early, then we're saving about $15,567 this year in interest that we didn't pay.
In interest, yeah.
Approximately, I mean, it's going to...
All of those projects have interest attached to them. The DWRF and the SRFs are usually two and a half, two and a quarter, something like that. But the others, if they had to be financed by a bond or something along those lines, that, that's a higher cost, so, yeah, we know how much they are.
And I didn't calculate the 2018s in there and that, that number, because that's already in the budget for this year.
Mm-hmm. So which ones are you looking at? Because I've got my...
Well, I was looking at, uh, the, the 40 acres, the land, and the Grandview project, and the Cornerstone, Lynn.
Yeah, $14,000.
And that's going to take, to do that, it's going to take, uh, and again, I'm sure the numbers are going to change a little bit one way or the other. Do that, it's going to take $151,933. And if we do what we're talking about with the water and wastewater, we're going to end up with a, uh, net effect of $150,643. So, you know, the difference is $1,290.
What was your third one?
Uh, the third one was, uh, let's see, again, I had land, Grandview, and the cornerstone land over there.
Miscellaneous, correct.
And that would effectively...
Is the cornerstone land in that water?
Well, that was, that was my question, is that...
Yeah. So, I'd appreciate if you wouldn't take the water money to pay off the...
Well, I think it's a great idea.
And, and actually, I, I got a comment about Grandview Circle. I agree with the concept, but the thing about Grandview Circle, it's a special assessment. So the people in Grandview Circle are paying that, that debt. Some of them have already paid in advance. So if we step in and say, well, we're going to pay it off, then you'd have all the water customers paying a special assessment debt.
Yeah, good point. I was going to say with, they would just pay us, but, yeah.
I mean, we would end up...
You're using funds, that's right.
So basically, in that case, you'd be offsetting whatever savings you think you were getting.
Well, if you, if you elected to do that, you wouldn't be eliminating their special assessment. They would continue that through the, the life of the assessment. You're just paying it off early and saving the interest.
But we're using everybody's funds to pay it off, which is...
And I think we're, we're down there anyway, aren't we, Lois? I believe.
Well, according to this, you've got $85,000 owing on it.
Well, that's a debt schedule. I mean, uh, you were putting in the revenues that we were receiving.
Yes, there's that.
Yeah. But I recall it was a much larger, or, excuse me, a much smaller number that was still owed, because people are paying those, paying it off.
John?
I thought, um, Lynn was close to, uh, asking the question that, leading the discussion, should we make a decision about no capital improvements this year? Let's get that behind us and then go on and move on. That, I thought you were real close to asking that.
I was, but the concept has to tie in with how we would pay the debt or what debt we'd pay off. So even if we think it's a good idea to keep it the way it is, we still need to figure out the impact. So, I mean, there's still, it's still a two-part question. It's not, you know, fix one and then go to the next.
Okay, but, but at least we could, if you get past that one, we can go back if we have to. But, but my point is, is I thought the question was good. Is it the concept of no capital improvements this year, is that the spirit of the board? If, if that is, that leads you to the next issue?
I think if you coupled that with a no increase, no rate increase this year...
Yeah, that, that too.
Yeah. That was certainly what I was lobbying for.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of that, but I think...
Yeah.
You need to lead the, the discussion to that.
Kirk, what did you say while we were kind of, a couple of us talking? You said, but I don't want to see you pay it off. What, what were you referring to?
Grandview Circle.
Okay. I didn't know if there was something else.
Well, before that, I was asking not to use...
No, on Grandview Circle, on Grandview Circle, are they paying the total dollars that we see on this list and that?
Or do we pay part of it, you're saying?
Are we paying part of it?
We were paying part of it, I believe.
I would have to check on that. We had enough people...
Yeah, I believe they were not, as I recall, and this is Board Action Two, that the township paid for, I believe it was like 15% of the project, total cost. So the assessment was basically 85%.
So in essence, we could use some funds. I, I don't know if you'd want to say how much, if it is a percentage, to answer your question.
But I think going back to what Dave said, regardless of whether we pay it off, they would still pay us over that lifetime.
Yeah. The extra...
How we do accounting, I don't know.
For eight years.
Can't say that, or near the treasure.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't make sense. It's not, it's not doing anything wrong.
No, as I don't know comment.
I'm looking at, uh, the, what we're talking about on Hargill Settlement and the, and the 271 acres. Now, one of them is, is in the general fund and one is in water. So really, we're just talking about the $62,000 on the water that would be paying off the, the debt on the 40 acres of water and the, uh, now Cornerstone is, is, is a general fund, so...
Cornerstone is here. It's, it's the township hall. The 271 acres is the land that was bought for the Wellfield Road and the Wellfield.
Right.
And Hartlow's going to be paid off no matter what you decide.
Right. I'm just trying to figure out how much money we're going to be able to pull forward to pay off all the debt. Because some of it's general fund, some of it's enterprise fund.
Well, you can't use, you can't use the enterprise funds to pay off the general debt.
I know that.
Yeah, that's the point you see.
But you could, you could clearly pay off, you know, the $64,000 for the 40 acres.
Uh, that's the, that is the DWRF two. That's the ma, um...
The heck is the road? Not Lake Enchantment, uh, for which project?
DWRF two. The Well, I don't know, 492.
Oh, Morgan Meadows.
Morgan Meadows. That, that's the, that 40 acres, the wells for Morgan Meadows for Phase Two.
But if you take the 62,000...
That's 64.
62,000 in this year's budget, and next year you have another 62,000 in it, and carry it forward like that, you're going to continue to generate funds to pay off the debt and that.
Oh, sure. That you, you could, you know, you could pay off totally the 40 acre parcel.
Right.
That's 64,000. You could pay that off.
It's only 50. What, what are you looking at? The 40 acres?
Yeah, it's 16, 16,000 plus the 3,078 per year. We've already got, we've already got 17 in there, so you've got 16, 16, 16, and then the interest.
And if I could, rather than, I guess what I was suggesting, I think John was alluding to, if we can, from a budget perspective, if we can just make the decision to do the no rate increase and, and do the no capital improvements this year, I don't know that we need to decide as part of the budget process what we're going to do with that net effect.
No, you don't need to.
Yeah.
We can approach that at a little, and if, and in fact, if, if you'd pay off some and you want to go back in and do some capital improvement programs, you could still do that. It wouldn't be too late, because the money is there.
All I was saying is, this is the, this is the carrot. Trying to figure out the benefit of doing this can help you decide whether you want to support the idea of following it. So that's, it's kind of a two-part question. Do you want to do the philosophy side of it? And do you have the financial information to back up your reasoning? So, I think it's a great idea. I think we should do it.
There's three of us.
That's all we need is consensus.
Four, four. Let's do it.
The only question I have, I'm looking through it, all the expenditures are the same from the previous budget to the current one and that.
Pretty much.
Revenue's less. I'm just concerned, are we going to have enough dollars or if something does happen somewhere down the line? And we haven't really addressed the hospitalization yet. I know you've figured out some of it's 30%. I'm hoping it's coming in a lot less than that, but I don't have any idea in that, so...
We kind of have direction from our meeting today, but that's not for this meeting, I don't think.
No, no, so, but, that's the only, I have no problem with what you're talking about now. I think it's a direction to go, because we're the setting board. We have to change things, we've got to change things. It's not the first time we've had to do something middle year on, on rate increases, so...
We're not locked in.
We had to do something in that too.
Yeah, and it's just basically for one year.
The only thing you're obliged to do is have a budget by December 31st and a public hearing by the 15th. Other than that, it's all you.
We've got five, Pete jumps on board, we've got six.
Kirk, are you comfortable with that? What we're talking about?
I'm good.
If something comes up, he comes back to the board.
Yeah.
Just another comment that I've made before for the future. If you ever do have another big project, I would suggest, and we have done this years ago, but the policy got changed with the previous board, you set your debt service fee and you keep it the same, no matter how much you grow.
You don't reduce it.
And you have paid the debt off early.
Yeah.
I like that part.
The previous board decided, okay, as the growth occurs, the individual portion goes down. And that's what we've been doing.
And we tell the residents though, as, as we hook more people up, it will cost you less. So I'm sure that was their reasoning for agreeing to it.
And the townships who've done that always end up in trouble. Who reduces, I mean, you know, who goes to reduce it? They leave it the same, I think we're fine. After we said the last couple of meetings.
Okay, so the consensus is to accept the second budget showing no rate increase on the water side and using the excess funds from, with, from holding at bay the capital improvements this year, 2018, using that to pay off some debt. And we can ask Kirk and Lois for what that could look like, based on the funds that we have to keep out of water. It didn't dawn on me, even though I had my lines, I did the same thing. I went over to Cornerstone and thought...
Yeah, it was one of my questions, is could we do that?
Yeah, and I had my line separating water, but it didn't connect. So we have those last five columns to have an impact. But unless you pay something off, it's not going to be, it's going to go against exactly what you just said, not lowering debt, keeping the amount the same. So that side of it isn't going to benefit. So in other words, if we don't have debt in the water payments that we can pay off using Pete's comment about keeping the debt the same amount, we're not going to save any money on the debt side. Because we would leave it at the same...
I would argue that.
Yeah, you save it on the interest side, not on the debt side.
Pay it off early and save interest.
But I mean, the payment amount, if it's $15 or $14.68, or whatever the debt amount is...
Oh, no, it won't impact that.
We would not reduce that, even though we're reducing debt.
No, the cost, you're, you're talking about cost versus debt. The cost will remain constant, it actually will increase as, you know, as other things impact it. But the, the, the debt is what you're removing. If you simply pay off that 40 acres, you save $7,000 in interest.
What we're doing, we're setting the township up for future projects at this point in time. By leaving the debt right there and it's going, we're paying them off, we're setting it up, if something comes out, we're going to have some availability to do it in that.
Well, under that... You're actually preserving interest dollars for capital.
Yes.
And if you do in fact pay off these smaller ones and keep the, the debt charges the same, you would actually pay off the bigger ones sooner. It actually, could I ask also, could you consider, as I suggested, raising the debt service fee to $15 to equal the actual debt that we owe next year? For today's change.
Are you saying, what you're, if I understand, you want to leave it at, at 15?
He's saying it's what, 14.67? No.
Right, yeah.
No, it's like 14.50, I believe, right now.
14.60, I think it is.
And I suggested 14.60.
14.50, 14.50, yeah.
But it's only because I was looking at the wrong column.
So the only increase would be the, uh, debt cost going up.
Correct. But that would remain the same, assuming we don't get more debt.
Going forward.
We're paying off debt.
So we'd raise the debt 50 cents then.
Correct.
But leave the volume rate the same.
Well, initially, we were just talking about rates, holding the rates down.
I would, I would be in favor of bringing all, all that debt where it's at, so next year, the utility bill looks the same as it did this year.
What are we going to have to have, Kirk, to, if we don't raise it at all, if we leave it at 14.50, that would balance against whatever debt we can pay off, I suppose.
Well, that, that's in there though, isn't it, currently? Is that, is that not in there without changing any of those rates?
No, it'll be $10,000 short. So we'll have to take $10,000 after that.
The new proposed budget that you put out, that we just picked up...
Yeah.
That rate freezes in there, that includes the debt service fee, right?
Yeah, what rate number did you use for debt in your new budget?
14.50 or $15?
The new one, $15. That was the change that you were first asking about.
So that's why it went up. I didn't think anything was going to change. But we said rates, we said hold the rates. We didn't say anything about...
Well, I can freeze it, but that's going to, what that's going to do, so you'd be eliminating the 40 cents I suggested today, plus 10 cents previously.
Right.
So that's going to reduce that bottom line number by whatever amount it is, which is probably roughly $10,000.
What you're saying is a bill would go, we left, put it at $15, that would be, the bills would be difference by 50 cents.
Or...
Per bill.
For the debt, yeah. Except it though.
Right, yeah.
Yes. Because unless you use more water, your rates would stay the same.
To be honest with you, I don't have a problem with, with 50 cents a month.
Lois?
Garbage is going down, isn't it?
People who have garbage.
So the bill is going to look roughly the same.
Yeah, it should be pretty cool.
It'll be a difference of a quarter.
I'm having a hard time finding the $15 debt service.
made two changes. One was, we were going to add a water project this year, okay, which had already been approved by the DEQ, and ultimately, you decided not to go forth with that. But also, as part of any kind of new debt, we have to get a couple of things. You know, we need a bond attorney to get us through that process, but we also need a financial consultant. And those two guys work in conjunction, they're two people working in conjunction to come up with a cost. And the second thing he did was, we added one debt, and he suggested, because we were only budgeting interest, because interest is the expense, okay? The principal is actually, it's an asset, so it's, you know, it's not, technically speaking, for auditors, an expense. But anyway, so he suggested that we do that. So, that's, that's when it went up to 15. Actually, it was higher than 15, I believe.
So, page four on miscellaneous really is for what, then? Page four under miscellaneous info.
The rate history?
Mm-hmm. And on the top line, I'm looking at proposed for 2018.
That was his original budget, was the $14.60.
Yeah.
That's what he was asking for. It was $14.50, and he wanted to go up 10 cents.
And then this resubmital?
Yep, because-
Went up to 15?
He just said he had grabbed the wrong number, and that's the 406 and 407 hundred thousand we were just talking about.
So, the proposed for 2018 under debt service water was supposed to be 15?
Now, in this, in this one.
That's right.
And so, what Lois is saying is, since it went down, since the trash went down, this would only be a 25 cent increase for debt to their bill once a month. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just was trying to figure out where the 15 came from.
Yep.
So, again, what I did originally with the, with the current debt service, I was originally charging the same every year, which was roughly $280,000. And now, we're back to changing every year. Because if you look at, if you look at the debt schedule on page five, it's not exactly the same payment every year. So, what I'm saying is, the $15 is just going to get us to next year's payments that are due.
Okay, thoughts?
I just have a question on the debt service, on that. Some of those that are bonded, can we pay them off ahead of time without a penalty?
Yes. Bonds, you can.
Pardon?
Yeah, can.
debt. But for the water, that's, it's just us.
So, the idea, then, is hold the water rates, the per gallon thousand, per thousand gallon rates, raise the debt from $14.60 to $15, hold our capital improvements this year, and use the difference of 80 or whatever thousand dollars it ends up being to pay down some debt. So, that's the idea. Is that amenable?
And the garbage is going to stay the same at $14.50?
The garbage was $14.75. They're proposing a drop to $14.50.
You don't want to freeze that, though, do you?
Quarter.
No, no.
Okay. Just checking.
Leave it alone.
Pardon?
You said, "Leave it alone."
I agree.
Leave what alone?
The trash, don't.
Okay, leave that, leave that going down to $14.50.
Yes, yeah.
So, where do we stand on the debt service? It was at $14.50. Where are we going with that now?
$14.60. Yeah, it's $14.60 right now.
It's $14.50. He had asked for the 10 cent increase, but now, he's actually asking for a total of 50 cents.
Right.
Which will help offset the trash. So, it'll only be a quarter. So, if you use the same amount of water you did this year that you did last year, your bill will stay the same except for a quarter. Do I have that correct? Am I understanding that right, if everything is equal?
Having been a what-year, the likelihood of having another what-year is remote.
These days, nothing is remote.
Yeah.
Anything could happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I agree.
So, for the purposes of this water budget, are we good?
I am.
Can we move on?
I think so.
For purposes of the water budget, you're going to leave the volume rate at 8.66. The base rate stays at 7. The debt service for the water goes to 15. Is that what you're talking about?
That's it.
Do we need to see anything else? Do you, we don't have to have that debt breakdown to approve the budget.
No.
We can do that in another-
You're just adapting the concept.
So, but is there anything else you're looking for from Kirk on this?
I don't think so.
Or Lois? I'd still like to see that spreadsheet with the years, the inception, and what the balance is. We don't have to have that right now.
The Excel sheet you're talking about.
Yep, the spreadsheet. Okay, you want to tackle wastewater? Can we? Because I don't remember what the, it just said water. Oh, it said public works. Okay, we're safe. I don't want to try to rush anybody, obviously, if you've got issues or questions or you need more information. But you can think on this. We've got another meeting tomorrow. If something comes up, you can show us these numbers and see, see what you think.
I didn't have any question on the wastewater at all, if we did the same thing we're doing with the water. The wastewater, if you, if you left, did essentially the same comment or the same concept with the rates, then I thought we'd come up with a net effect of 66,817 that would be added to the water net effect. And I thought that was the idea.
Do we have any obligations, Kirk, on the wastewater side that we have to do this year?
In terms of capital outlay?
Yeah, contribute to?
Well, you know, if you look at what Lois did provide, you know, the stuff that we have to do is, for example, if we have sewer hookups, you know, we've been having sewer hookups, and they're going to continue. We have to purchase grinder stations. Same thing with meters, you know, and we're kind of behind on vehicle purchases, that kind of stuff. So, that's what I'm saying. That's the part that I did not, I haven't reduced that or changed that. So, that basically is what it is.
Well, that's, there's nothing in the capital improvement on that anyway, is there?
Not in the, in the improvements, correct, yes.
I would just think of that as part of doing business. I mean, that's part of the fees.
But I just want to-
But that wouldn't be impacted by what we're doing or what we're considering doing with the budget.
Won't impact that.
So, we didn't ask Kirk, though, to do this. Does your wastewater, did you do that with wastewater, too?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
We were just talking water, so. Well, then, if you go back to debt-
Yeah, there's, there's a lot less debt, obviously.
That, that's it? Just the facility and the wastewater side?
That's it.
Have you?
Well, the wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. We've got two decks. That's what I just said out mine. It's in a different format in this budget. You got a separate line item to treatment plant? Uh, well, yeah. It's in actually two, right, yeah.
I guess I would propose that we do the same thing with wastewater that we did with water, is leave the volume rate at 11.83 instead of going to 12.37. And the $9 base fee would stay the same, and the debt service wastewater could go ahead and go down to 6.60. And that was in that new budget, the 6.60, Kurt?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I had a change there. Hopefully, I got that one right.
Just apply the, the same concept that we applied on the water, apply it to the wastewater. Like I say, if you, if you do that, you come up with a net effect of some 60.
Yeah, 65.
66,000, 66,800.
The only question I have is, under one-time costs and that, on fees, you're talking about on the SAW grant, the asset management program, our local match went from 22 up to 75. Is that built in there, and we have that dollar to cover it?
I didn't make any changes related to that. I mean, that's basically, I believe I mentioned this in the first, the first session.
So, that's in, that's in the budget?
Right, but that's, that's also a changeable picture. I'd already, the application is based on pricing that I got four years ago. The big chunk of wastewater management is going to be basically televising and have an assessment on of the mains and manholes. Okay, so that already jumped. The new, basically, four years later, a different manager, four years later, has already cost me $77,000 more. And what's happened since that is the requirements for the type of work that's done. I actually got an email from the DEQ. A lot of these original grants, this has been going on for four years, or three years, I should say, three years. Some of the original ones, they were, at least in the UP, they were approving manhole assessments at a lower level. So, what just happened recently is the director of that department said, oh, she had a meeting with all of her project managers, said, "Look, we're going to have to crack down." Because that's in the rules. You know, these things have rules that are adopted by the state. She said, "We're going to have to force a rule." So, basically, they increased the level of effort required for manhole assessments. And I'm still waiting for the input back on that. So, but whatever it is, and what I'm saying is, it's going to be greater than my reimbursable limit. So, my application, I put down the project cost, we're liable for 10%. So, that number was like 22,000. Anything above that number, we got to pay 100%. So, instead of 22,000 or whatever it was, you know, it could be 100,000, so.
If you take in, in the budget, I couldn't tell for sure, the consideration when Chocly actually pays us for that 1% and what is going to-
Well, I did put that in because, you know-
They're not buying it from us.
Yeah, they are.
Which?
The treatment capacity, line capacity.
I thought they got that from the city.
They're explaining it. Half from us, half from the city. Because that's still-
It's still pending.
What the, what the advisory board agreed to was, okay, we'll agree to it, subject to you actually doing the hookup, you know, so.
I think they said it was 19 anyway. I don't think-
Whenever it is, but that dollar is coming to us, plus the decrease that we have to pay of X number of dollars, too.
Right.
Right, so that'll be a decrease on your cost factors.
Yep, and that'll be the debt service, basically.
When that happens.
Yes. So, our user costs are going to remain the same, but the debt service will be going down.
Debt service going down, and the dollars coming in from Chocly will-
Correct.
They'll be going in as revenue.
Yep.
When that happens.
And that'll be like a one-shot revenue deal, so.
That's memory of the board. My recollection was that the board said, "Let the city do the whole thing."
Yeah, yeah.
I know that was the recommendation, but I didn't think the board acted on it. You might want to change, check that, because I think you made a motion saying, "Let the city do it."
No, no.
No?
No. The only discussion about that was, at the end, I suggested that it's going to require a contract amendment. So, the city is going to have their attorney work on it. And I just suggested that our attorney assists the city in the change of the contract. And Roger said, "Let the city do it," because he, I believe, also represents Chocly.
He does.
Yeah, initially, that's what we said, was we weren't going to get involved. And then, when they came and talked again, we said, "Okay."
Yeah, you deferred it.
So, was that a motion that you made, Dave?
That was, but it was, it was to approve the tentative sale to-
No, no, I meant on the wastewater.
On the rates? No, I think we were just looking for a consensus.
You can't have, you can't vote out now, anyway.
I threw that up as an offering.
So, if you look at your rate history, then, that, those numbers on page four, the only thing that stays from the proposed numbers is the trash. Would that be correct?
Well, if, if you considered both the water and the wastewater, then you could go across, and water volume would be at 8.66, base at 7. The wastewater would stay at 11.83 with the base at 9. The debt service for water would be at 15, which is a 50 cent increase. And the debt service for wastewater would go down 10 cents, down to 6.60. And the garbage would go from 14.75 to 14.50. So, we'd be dropping 35 cents and going up 50. So, I guess the net effect is 20 cents.
So, I thought we were, we are going to lower the wastewater debt service?
Using, using the same concept that we will raise the water, I would say yes.
Okay.
Well, I wasn't, I don't believe I proposed it.
Yeah, I didn't think he was.
Yeah.
So, the 6.60 is what?
The 6.60 is what's in the budget, right?
The new one?
My first-
Yes.
Your first one?
I didn't change it, yeah.
Page four, 6.60.
Yeah, he didn't change it.
Okay.
I think it went down 10 cents from last year.
Yep.
Okay. So, we're changing three things, then?
No, that one, I, I believe, I used the correct number.
Debt service is $15, and then your waste is-
660, and the trash goes down a quarter, right? So that's just three.
Three things, okay.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Anybody else?
The only thing on garbage collection, they've got thing, rate increases built in on a specific timeframe and that. So I don't know, don't remember what those timeframes are at this point in time. That's something we'll have to look at when it happens.
Because this rate is based on, you know, our, the changes that they've been making.
The base-
I think there was one this year.
What was the base?
Now, the other thing on, on, you've got the collection fee for a north country disposal. They have a COLA increase. Is that taken care of? Has that already been built in or you don't?
I use that number to, yes. I mean, I don't know what the number is, but I'm just assuming there will be an increase.
I missed the number you were talking about for base. What was the base going to be on the wastewater?
Nine.
Nine, no.
Staying at nine?
Same as it currently is.
Base at nine.
Well, the debt service goes from 1450 to 15. The debt service for wastewater goes from 670 to 660. And the garbage goes from 1475 to 1450. Okay. Heck, that was easy.
Kind of laying there waiting for consensus, so.
Yeah, I've, I've got it on this end, I think.
I think the biggest thing is, if something happens, we, the board's going to have to do something. That's it.
All up to us.
And I think if Kirk can put together some future planning as to what projects we should be considering in the future, then you can start planning on that.
I think that's up to the board to decide what they want to do. And I think the big grilling in the room, what do you want to do with phase two? In my opinion, all the board needs to attach to that is a completion date, if you want to move forward through it. And then let the powers to be, figure out what kind of a timeframe you got to fit into. And then you go back and look at it and see if that's feasible or not.
Well, I know Clerk Rattari was talking about like 2020, 2021, somewhere in there. And that's fine unless we start something. I mean, we can't really commit a future board. We can start planning for it, but we don't know that that'll happen. I think that's the elephant in the room.
Well, I think if you, just for example, if we decide that we want to have phase two done by 2025, then the superintendent and the manager take that 2025 completion date and back it up and see what has to happen, when. And when you, I mean, there's a point you're going to need money. There's a point you got to start doing certain projects. But that's the timeline that those guys have to figure out based on the 2025 completion date and to see where it comes out. I mean, we don't really know where it's going to come out. We may already be too late and it can't happen. But we don't know until we put a date on it and, and they figure out what we got to do.
But with regard to committing future boards, that would be a committed project that you would be doing through DWRF that would be on a 20-year payback program. So that would, that would commit. It's the same, same as the road millage that you did. You've, you've committed future boards-
Right.
To the maintenance on it.
But if Randy was thinking it was a three or four-year project due in 2025, it would be beyond us, at least this board.
It'll be five years.
All the best you can do is lay it out there and if the board wants to change the direction they're headed, I guess that's up to the future board.
And the penalties that go with that would be up to the future board.
Done that before.
Okay. I think we are finished with Public Works.
Stay home tomorrow?
Hey, are you kidding me? Well, you could actually have, you could actually, tomorrow, you could use your time to determine whether or not you have a consensus budget and then we can advertise for a public hearing.
Can we do it at a work session?
Sure.
Yeah.
You reach a consensus budget and that's what you then advertise for the public hearing before you take the formal action.
That'd be my suggestion.
We was canceled the rest of our-
Then we can take Monday and Tuesday off.
The other day, we were discussing PSI's and all this other stuff. Do we have to discuss that anymore? Or is that at a board meeting?
Discussing what?
All these standards and that we talked about.
Level of service.
Level of service.
Oh, level of service.
All this other stuff here.
That was already approved, right?
What was it?
That was at a board meeting.
That was at a board meeting, okay. But, but it was never approved. It was up for discussion. How do we stand against everyone else as far as-
It was a tentative approval.
PSI and all the other ones, so.
I think our best bet is to have some kind of a meeting, well, a work session after the first of the year. Budget's done. Have it a capital improvement meeting and kind of chew on this. Make our decision or our consensus as to what we're going to do with phase two. You know, we'll know that our, our projects for this year are going to be on hold. We'll know what our debt balance is by then, I'm thinking. Because we'll know how much to put on it.
And we can ask what new information can be provided.
In another month.
All the board needs to do is, is agree on the concept of what direction we want to head. Because we don't really have any hard numbers.
Not now, no.
And we won't have by the first of the year.
Well, we do need to decide what we're going to do with phase two or any of these other, you know.
The concept of what-
Well, we can, we can give you pretty good ballpark numbers on phase two if you decide you want to go forward. We can tell you pretty close what it's going to cost.
But there's a reserve more than just the total amount, but it's-
It's time.
How you're going to, how you're going to pay for it and the rate change is going to have to be to accomplish it. And I think there's a lot of things in there that you have to weigh in so you know exactly what's going to happen before you decide that, yeah, the 2025 date is a good date and we should move ahead with it.
And what's on the horizon?
Yeah, so if we, that's what I said. We have a conversation sometime January 20.
Well, you know, you know that if we go beyond the timeframe in the agreement, you're going to have a 54 cent a thousand increase.
All that information-
That's the target.
Needs to be in there.
Yep. That's, that's why that was set as the target, was that, that timeframe, so you avoid that 54 cent a thousand.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Becomes a bargaining chip.
Maybe.
Well, and just, just the thought that you have a plan out there is the bargaining chip. You may be able to work out a deal very similar to what we have. And then it's a whole separate consideration as to whether it's, it's feasible, it's reasonable to go ahead with that project phase two. If you can get the rates from the city at a reasonable rate, then there's no need to press ahead. But you're not going to get the rates from the city at a reasonable rate if you don't have a, a plan too.
Well, and maybe 492 ends up being some kind of a special assessment. We check with property owners all the way up to Morgan Meadows and-
It wouldn't work.
Say we have, I mean, if we have water, city water. If we have some kind of an agreement with them that the rate's reasonable and we help put the infrastructure in, because a project to do the wells would include that. But if we have a decent enough cost on city water, we use our resources for the expansion.
But then you're, but then you're still going back to being subservient to someone else for your water, which is the whole concept of phase one and phase two, to not be in that situation.
I guess my whole thought would be that we're selling water to the city.
In the context today, my conversations today with some of the townships, when you mentioned about we had to negotiate with the city in the coming years, they said, "Good luck." I said, "That's why we're looking for water."
And I think you ought to take a look at who you're going to have to negotiate with. It's a whole new bunch. Well, not, not really. It's just the other way around. It's a really old bunch.
Different makeup.
Different makeup. But they're on an election cycle too, so you don't know what's going to happen.
Well, it is. But, but again, we're under recommendation from the DEQ to complete our water project. I mean, it is their strong and adamant recommendation that we go forward and finish our own water project if we have access to water.
That's what we paid $20,000 for.
Well, that's why you invested $5 million in phase one-
Right.
With the expectation that phase two would also be completed. So, you know, and that's the time, that's the timeframe that we've been utilizing and operating on is the date that that agreement terminates, you know, terminates, that agreed to rate. And then there's the 54 cent per thousand increase that comes with that.
When their experts were here, what we heard was obtain all the water you can obtain.
Right.
And it made sense.
Well, there are limitations, you know. We don't have, obviously, Lake Superior. Well, actually, we do, but that's not cost-effective. We'd have to build a system around the city. And actually, the site that we would have used to put a pumping treatment plant- You're the one who moved it. But anyway, it's been sold now, so.
Get it pointed. So are we meeting tomorrow?
Yep.
Five minutes.
And then we're going to get a long weekend. Good. Monday and Tuesday off.
Yeah, what I would, what I would envision tomorrow is a rehash of the entire budget to see if you're comfortable with where you're at. And if you are, then I can put the ad together and get it placed to run early. And then you're at your leisure to schedule the public hearing sometime between now and December 15th.
Scary thought, I think we'd get something done ahead of schedule one.
Well, I think we're on for Public Works tomorrow, though. Can we expand that into the whole budget? Or do we have to just focus on Public Works?
You only need 18 hours. We can repost it right now. It's a different meeting.
You'll have to post it then.
Mm-hmm. It would simply be a budget, budget work session, period. So if we posted it right after this meeting, that more than eighteen hours.
Well, you had already previously said you wanted to discuss a couple of general fund things. You said previously you wanted to discuss general fund, anyway.
Yeah, but the way you've got it posted, it says Public Works. I just want to make sure we're-
It's just a budget work session, period. And it's the whole budget.
Alrighty. Think we're good?
Good.
Okay. 4:25. Do this again tomorrow.